Calling to order, the December fifteenth, two thousand and eleven meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees, we will begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair, can you give us a roll call and recognition of visitors, please?
See, visitors include Richard Schrader and Ryan Keye Ily.
All right, thank you. The petitions, the communications section of the board agenda is a time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan on speaking. In that instance, the chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes. Presenters may choose to speak at the first or second petitions and communications sections, but not both. And prior to the beginning of the comments, we ask that you state your name, address, city, and state. And do we have anyone at this time that would like to address the board? All right, please approach the podium.
My name is John Winter. I live at two oh nine North Frank in Spring Hill, Kansas. I was grateful when at the October Board of Trustees meeting, it was announced that the college's housekeeping services would not be outsourced. I believe the decision was prudent and wise. Although the sense in the housekeeping department is, the same result, the elimination of the housekeeping department will still be achieved, but the present strategy now seems to be death by a thousand cuts. The November seventeenth ledger reported that, quote, "The administration found they were able to save $750,000 by changing procedures in the housekeeping services," unquote. The procedures that brought about such savings is not that the housekeeping staff is now utilizing new innovative cleaning techniques or using state-of-the-art equipment. This three-quarters of a million cost-cutting maneuver, though by now it's closer to $900,000, is the sole result of the decision to not replace resigning and retiring custodial staff members. Twenty-four months ago, the housekeeping department had ninety-eight staff members. This month, we have sixty-two staff members, one of whom will retire this month and two more who are using FMLA for child delivery. The lack of housekeeping personnel has become obvious and dire. As we endeavor to provide quality services for the campus, the necessity for additional crew members has become undeniable and unavoidable. Instead of hiring qualified employees that we have screened and in whom we can build and instill loyalty to the college's vision, mission, and values, we're compelled to use a temporary employment service. The personnel sent to us by the temp service are day workers, work today, paid today. They carry no invested loyalty to either the temp agency or to JCCC. They may be on campus for one night, or for three nights, or for ten. Most of the temp personnel who have been sent to the college reside outside of the Johnson County, thus arriving with little understanding of the college's prominent role in this county's social and economic health and vitality, and with no, absolutely no commitment to this institution beyond this being the place where they earn tonight's minimum wage. And that's exactly what they earn, even though the college pays the temp agency more than is paid to the average part-time housekeeper who is a JCCC employee. A temp agency personnel whom I supervise on the weekend worked eight hours, concluding his shift at four-thirty a.m., and I'm ashamed to say, after deductions, he netted fifty-three dollars. Fifty-three dollars. Most in this room earn that much before their workday's first break. And for eight hours' work, into the midnight shift, with no night differential here on this campus, working for minimum wage, and the temp agency pays him fifty-three dollars. This particular gentleman has three young children, a fourth due in the spring, and since he's not been able to afford a car, no surprise there, he pays a family member to bring him to the campus and to pick him up again at four-thirty a.m., and he pays them out of his meager fifty-three dollars. Fifty-three dollars for eight hours' work, and that for the strain of midnight labor. And I am embarrassed that we at this institution, which has been built on the values of dignity and self-worth, and on the value of excellence, are participating in such treatment to another person who is serving us in such a vital role. And this practice is not cutting costs. We are paying the temp agency dollars more per hour than the average part-time college employee in the housekeeping department, and whose only regular benefit beyond their hourly wage is four hours of PAL time per month. We could hire a part-time temporary college employee who does not receive PAL time, and the cost to have that college employee on campus would be dollars less per hour than the amount we currently pay the temp agency. And we could retain our own dignity and self-worth by not participating in such a menial minimum wage paid to a fellow member of our community. Utilizing a temp agency month after month does not save operating costs, and housekeeping supervisors find themselves nightly training and retraining temp agency employees whom they will never see again. Using a temp service only makes sense when the goal is to eventually eliminate the entire JCCC housekeeping department. Instead of executing the housekeeping department with one Board of Trustees decision, the strategy to achieve the same results appears to be death by a thousand cuts. I'm asking that we develop a plan to rebuild the JCCC housekeeping department, which has had its morale deteriorated and its trust ravaged these past ten months. And I'm asking that we be finished with using a temp agency to replace the glaring reduction of housekeeping personnel. Using a temp agency neither fits our stated values, nor reduces operating expenditures, nor does it deliver a service that meets our standards and expectations. To ignore these truths will damage this board's reputation and this institution's standing in both the community and with its employees. Indeed, the JCC brand is slipping and is in peril.
Thank you, Mr. Winter. Is there anyone else that would like to approach the podium and have comments for the board? If I'd seen none, we'll close the petitions and communications section of this part of the agenda. There will be a second opportunity later in the evening. And then we'll just next to awards and recognitions, and Dr. Crowe.
Thank you, Chair Weiss. We have three recognitions this evening. Recently, Dr. Callaway received a letter from Ms. Polly Benz, who's the executive director for the Council for Resource Development. The CRD is the only professional organization which exclusively concerns fundraising to your colleges. Their mission is to connect, educate, support, strengthen, and celebrate community college professional development. This last year, my friend to my left here, Dr. Joe Sobchak, executive vice president of Administrative Services, sat as the director of the CRD. And this letter thanks us for using their services this last year. So, thank you, Dr. Sobchak.
Thank you.
Next, I would like for Karen Martley, who's the executive director of Workforce Community and Staff Development, and Cheryl Lehman, Business Solutions Consultant in the CBT, to approach the podium along with Chair Weiss. She's headed in that direction right now. In November, the Spring Hill Chamber had its annual awards dinner, and Johnson County Community College was recognized by the Chamber as Business of the Year in the Service category. Cheryl Lehman was present at the dinner and accepted the award on behalf of JCCC. In presenting that award, the Chamber recognized our forty-four thousand students that we serve here, both in credit and non-credit programs, our professional continuing education training, the hobby vocational recreational enrichment programs that we have, all of our technical training, both on the credit and non-credit side. They recognized our assistance to them, the Chamber, in their Lunch and Learn series that was established, in which the marketplace was examined, opportunities that exist in the existing economy, and professional development advice was given to individuals attending those Lunch and Learns as well. And they also mentioned the benefit that the CBT does add to the local economy as well. So, on behalf of the college, Chair Weiss, we ask that you receive the award.
Thank you.
It was an honor to be able to accept this.
Thank you.
Dr. Callaway also, it was an honor. We mentioned you in our remarks.
Thank you.
And the Spring Hill Chamber of Commerce holds this college in high esteem, so it was very nice to have you.
Thank you. And certainly the work of the staff and everyone here at the college, certainly much more than the Board of Trustees that are accepting it on your behalf that made that possible. So, thank you for all of your efforts.
And finally, I would like for Wendy Look to stand and be recognized. Wendy is a women's soccer assistant coach, and she has recently been told that she will receive in January the Junior College Central Region Assistant Coach of the Year by the National Soccer Coaches Association of America. And she's one of four assistant coaches in the United States to receive such award. Wendy has completed her tenth season for the Lady Cavaliers, this year finishing fourteen, five, and two, reaching the semifinals of the regional tournament. In her ten seasons with the college, Wendy has helped coach the team to the NJCAA Division One runner-up, as a runner-up finish, a district championship, five regional six championships, two runner-up finishes, and four top fifteen rankings at the end of the season. Not only that, but she's had forty-five athletes which have been recognized as All-Region Six Athletes of the Year, fifty-two have been selected as All-Kansas J-Hot Conference Performers, seven more have earned NJCAA All-American status, three have been selected NC, excuse me, NSCAA All-Americans, three have been selected NJCAA All-Tournament Players, and four have garnered NJCAA Academic All-American accolades. And I'm winded.
Well, after ten seasons, I can say there was a time when I used to know my stats. However, I just know that that's not important. What is important is that I get paid doing something that I love, representing a school that I love, and I'd like to bring that national award recognition to this college. However, it's not about that. It's about being able to be around and invest in the lives of young athletes, teaching them to do the right thing on and off the field, and that's what my job's all about.
Thank you, Wendy. It's a good recognition. Chair Weiss, that concludes my report.
Thank you. We move next to the college lobbyist report. And Mr. Carter?
Excuse me, I hate to interrupt, but I know that you are pretty well-known for your bow tie attire there, but I'm sensing that there's something different this evening.
Well, according to Andy Williams, the famous entertainer, this is the most wonderful time of the year. And when should you not wear pants like these but during the most wonderful time?
And I wonder if you might be able to step out over to this side of the podium so that we could gaze in all their glory?
We thought you spilled something on my leg. And that concludes my lobbyist report for the month of December. We have fans. We usually start off these reports with sort of a financial picture and taking a look at where the state is financially, and estimators were pretty much spot-on, at least as far as the month of November goes. Revenues were up about $2.5 million minimally, considering the state's overall budget, for the month of November. That puts us at about $406 million in the bank, or receipts, rather, this time of year compared to about $384 million last year. That number will come into play a little bit later in the report when I talk about one of the things that is in the mix or that is going on as far as tax policy is concerned. The administration continues to really not talk much about tax policy. In fact, they've indicated that most of the components or the strong points will be revealed in the governor's State-of-the-State message in January. The State-of-the-State address will be, I believe, on Thursday, I want to say it's the fifteenth. I don't have the date down specifically, but it's a little bit later than is typical. Usually, that address is delivered either on the first evening or the second evening of the reconvening of the legislature in Topeka. So, we'll learn a little bit more about that in January. We're hoping that some of the details will be available to folks like me who deal in this business a little bit before the speech, but we're not receiving any promises of such. However, Secretary Nick Jordan, Secretary of Revenue Nick Jordan, did present some information to a group of lobbyists at the Kansas Chamber of Commerce at a meeting earlier this week, where he didn't give details, but indicated that we should be anticipating from a personal income tax to the employee in Kansas, something that looks more like a flat tax, moving from a three-tiered system to something more of a two-tiered system. And they would be taking a look at the small businesses, the LLCs and the S Corps, and figuring out how to better incent those types of businesses, since most of those corporations or organizations would pay through personal income tax. The plan is chock-full of buzzwords. We heard them all as the secretary was presenting us the various components that they were willing to share with us. So, we'll have to wait until January to see if the plan passes the flinch test. They've also undertaken the work of Arthur Lafer, a Reagan-era economist, a well-known economist, and he has been the consultant on much of the tax policy plan. He'll be in town next week, going across the state on an editorial board tour. So, we may learn some additional components as we see in the paper just before Christmas. But most importantly, one of the items, and we don't know what it is yet, but one of the theories or items that he's been working on is something that they want to implement for the first time in Kansas. It's never been implemented in any other state before. I don't know what that means, but we're apparently going to be a testing ground for at least one of the policies as far as the tax plan goes. To make things interesting, the chair of Senate Ways and Means Committee, Carolyn McGinn, out of Sedgwick, down near Wichita, has or will prefile a bill that would reduce the one-cent sales tax increase approximately six months earlier than it was supposed to sunset. This first shot across the bow, if you will, is going to make things interesting because it will put some of the hard-right folks, it'll back them into the wall as far as should they reduce that one-cent sales tax. That's what they were elected to do, or that's what they campaigned on doing, versus supporting the governor's plan, who is now asking that the one-cent sales tax be retained indefinitely. So, that's going to make things interesting as far as starting off the dialogue on tax policy. Just in the news, the past couple of days, I believe it was yesterday, the governor presented his K-12 finance formula redo, if you will. The plan would essentially, it's been simplified compared to some of the rumors that we've talked about or that I've reported on over the past several months, and it would essentially pool the twenty mills that are collected at the statewide level and take that $538 million and redistribute it equally across the state. There would be provisions for local districts to increase their property mills. We don't know all the full details yet, and it will probably be well into the beginning of the legislative session before we figure out what that means as far as wins and losses for many districts across the state. We are told that it is a whole harmless formula, but I think we need to really get into the mechanics and the specifics of the plan, which you can't do in a twenty-four to thirty-six hour period. So, we'll continue to pour over the details of what that formula looks like so that we have a good grasp of what that means for us here as well. Dr. Sobchak and I participated in a corporate council visit that occurred this week. There were several community college officials, as well as some industry representatives, that visited with the Secretary of Commerce, as well as the governor, and touted the importance of the role that community colleges play in not only the economy, but preserving and creating jobs. And I think that visit was well-received, both by Secretary George, as well as the governor, and we used some specific examples from the Small Business Development Center here on campus, as well as some students that have been through some programs and are now out in the workforce that were featured in the Kansas City Star. And again, it was good dialogue, received very well by both of those administration officials. Also, was a push for the administration to support the Board of Regents' request for the eight million for the technical education-tiered formula, the first portion of that, if you will. Backing up just a moment, as I skipped one of the items in the report, and that is the legislative dialogues that we do here for the Johnson County delegation. We've completed those. We had about a fifty percent ratio on participants. That's actually fairly good. I'd like to see that all twenty-nine of our, twenty-eight of our delegates come to our events. We know that's not possible for scheduling reasons. But the dialogues for everyone that attended, various ones, prove to enhance some of the relationships that we already have, and I think that they created some new relationships where maybe none existed in the past, and that's the key to our success moving forward when the legislature reconvenes. And we'll continue to do those types of things in the years to come. I think the only other thing that I did not include in the report, and that is that the CAPERS Study Commission has, for the most part, completed their work and is working on forwarding their report to the legislature. The big-picture items are that new hires will be moving to a defined contribution plan versus a defined benefit plan. We don't know what the specifics of those, the mechanics of those amounts or those percentages the employee would be responsible for are yet. That's something that I think we'll be looking at when the legislature returns. One thing that is interesting, and this will be debated pretty hotly, I think, in the legislative session, is it removes the, or it eliminates the annualization of legislature, the legislators pay. We have one hundred and sixty-five folks representing the state in Topeka, and their salaries are annualized at about $85,000 a year. They only serve for ninety days, and so they take those ninety days and figure out what that annualized salary looks like. The new proposal would remove that annualization out, and that will have an impact on the type of people that might, should that pass, the folks who would run or serve at the state level. And they're still working on figuring out what the balance that is insolvent looks like, and we've heard rumors that they're talking about bonding some of that obligation. Again, that's some of the, those are some of the things that we'll see once folks come back in Topeka and we start debating the issues hot and heavy. Two other final things. A new president was named at Emporia State University. Again, not necessarily an impact here, but just good to know that Michael Sean Rock, a native Kansan, was named the president of Emporia State University. And then finally, this is a bit of hot news that just arrived in my inbox, and that is that Secretary of SRS, Rob Sidleke, has resigned and will be returning to Florida, and that just came out at four o'clock this afternoon. So, again, government is changing in Topeka, and that all impacts the way things happen, even at the budget level for us. I'd stop there and entertain any questions.
All right, does anyone have any comments or questions? Trustee Stewart?
Yeah, explain the annualizing this legislator's salary. They wouldn't annualize them, say, be lower, or?
Right, it would be based on the amount that they would receive for their ninety-day service, and so that is about $18,000, $19,000. It's a little bit more if you're in leadership or if you hold certain positions. It's almost like at a school, if you're a coach, you receive a little bit more for that, or if you're a sponsor for a particular club or something like that. So, committee chairs, folks in leadership, receive a little bit more, but it would be based off of their ninety-day service. That's a big change from $85,000.
Yeah. Based up all five for retirement after how many years?
I don't remember the, I'm looking at a former legislator to see if.
It used to be ten. I had heard they changed it to you're vested after five.
Yeah.
Right. Which is two and a half terms.
You ought to propose they get the same salaries as the trustees.
We already get what we pay for in a lot of cases.
We get to annualize ours for a year.
Wow.
Do we have any other questions or comments?
I'd seen none.
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Thank you.
We'll begin with committee reports and recommendations with the management report, and trustee Dr. Drummond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I feel a little sheepish because I'm not dressed quite the way I should be after our lobbyist report. I don't have those pants on. But I'll forge my way through this, even without a bow tie. Behind tab two, you will find the management report, committee report, on pages one through eighteen. We've got several recommendations tonight, but the first two will take the lion's share of the time because they're a little complex and need to explain them to the audience somewhat. The first recommendation pertains to the Series 2009 COP, Certificates of Participation. As we've talked about before, we are in the process of finalizing the amendment to that. As you might recall, we have an opportunity to transfer about a million dollars of savings from our Olathe Health Education Center to the construction of the Culinary Arts Center budget. Since these funds were generated by issuing the 2009 COPs, we need to approve a resolution found in Supplement B. You should have Supplement B by your side. We need to have that resolution passed, and our chair sign it after this meeting. Just to give you a little bit of background, November 2009, the college issued Certificates of Participation Series 2009 Build American Bonds in the amount of $15,100,000 for funding of the Olathe Health Education Center. Because these are a special type of bonds, they have special requirements on them, and the best option for us in spending the funds that we are participating in is to transfer that money and work through Commerce and allow that money to be used, the savings we had at the OHAC, to be used in the Culinary Arts Center. So, that's what the resolutions and the legal work has all been about. Given that it is a recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to adopt the resolution shown on pages three and four in Supplement B, authorizing the amendment of financing documents for the Series 2009 Certificates of Participation to allow the use of monies remaining in the project fund after total completion of Olathe Health Education Center to make certain capital expenditures in connection with the planning, design, construction, and equipping and furnishing in the new Culinary Arts Center on the college's main campus. And I would so move that.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The second recommendation pertains to cost savings. We're exercising an option to purchase prepayment of Series 2004 Certificates of Participation. We've talked at prior board meetings about taking advantage of opportunities that falling interest rates would present us, and we've been studying that, and that is before us right now. So, at the request of the management committee, we want to take advantage of that. You see in your packet the savings that are involved in this process. We'll save by reissuing these bonds, about $173,000. The only challenge, and it's not a lot of challenge for us, is we have to prepay the bonds, about $2.88 million additional principal in 2012, which was not anticipated, is not budgeting. But we will go ahead and take that out of our general fund, and that will probably raise the percentage of amount that we usually expend from the general fund, a couple percentage points or so. It depends, it's too early to tell. So, we have to be aware of that. If we make the prepayment, it'll lower the June 30, 2012, undercurrent cash in our funds by $2.88 million. So, we think this is still an opportunity. We think we have the cash flow and the reserves to handle this and to save the taxpayers $173,000. So, it's a recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to authorize the exercise of an option to purchase and prepayment on April 1, 2012, of $2,880,000 principal portion, the Series 2004 Certificates of Participation payable on or before April 1, 2013, subject to the availability of the budget. And I would make that recommendation.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion?
I commend Joe Sobchak, and specifically Bob Crater, for watching during this economic cycle when interest rates were down, for opportunities for the college to save money. And this was one of those that Bob brought forward, to save us $173,000 in interest expense, and I just want to make sure the credit gets over to Bob and Joe in bringing those forward.
And I would echo that, what trustee Stewart just said. As you may know, the volatility in the bond market is pretty strong, and so you have to watch it very closely almost every day to see when those opportunities are going to be there and project that out. And because of our excellent staff, we're going to take advantage of that, and I'd like to thank them personally for that.
And I really thought if I keep commending Bob, he'll cancel his retirement coming next year.
We're still working on that. We're still working on that.
And my meetings in a row, I've done that.
My assumption also is that the 4% interest that we're saving by prepaying these is more than what that $2.8 million would earn just in our unencumbered general fund. Is that correct?
Many.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yes. And Dr. Cook?
Chairman Weiss, thank you. Trustee Drummond, if you would, I think it would be helpful to, because it may be perceived that we're spending $2.8 million that's not budgeted that we don't have to save the money. And you might explain that the 2.8 is money that we owe at some point in time, and we're accelerating the payment to save this $174,000. So, I guess I don't want people in the audience to think that, well, there they go. They're spending 2.8 they really don't have because it wasn't budgeted.
Sure. We're very fortunate, very, very good point, trustee Cook. We're very fortunate to be able to have the reserves at this point to be able to make that prepayment and to save us $173,000. Because of the planning of the trustees in the past several years, we have a large enough reserve that we can do things like this when opportunities are presented. And without the opportunities, we wouldn't be doing it. But with the opportunity, we're taking advantage of it. And that's because of the foreplanning by trustees for many years, so.
My only clarification is, Bob, when you made the motion, you said on or before April 1. The packet says on or after. I don't know that that's, how important that is, but are you going on and after, which is in the packet?
Well, I think, correct me if I'm wrong here, Joe. I think beginning the 1st of April 2012, we want to take advantage of the opportunity until, I think, April 2013. Somewhere in that window is when we're going to...
We need to get this done by April 1, correct?
So, before would be the right timeframe.
We have to notify Commerce Bank 60 days in advance of April 1, 2012, if we want to take advantage of paying the 2013 and the 2014 payments by April 1, 2012.
But we actually pay the money out?
April 1, 2012.
12, okay.
I read this as saying these are payments that would have normally come after April 1, 2013 that we're paying in advance.
I understand that. I'm just, the lawyer in me says, is, do we want after or before? Because they have different meanings. And you said before, and the paper says after. I don't care which one it is. Bob knows what it is.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Next item pertains to our Dell Computer Contract. It's our annual renewal. We've been in agreement with them for many years. We continue to look at that agreement and work with it, and we do competitive bidding quite often on that. So, we're asking to move forward with this contract renewal. Management Committee recommends the Board of Trustees accept the college administration recommendation to allow the volume purchase agreement with Dell Marketing LP to renew automatically for one year specified in the agreement, subject to the provision that either party may terminate this agreement without cause at any time on at least a 30-day prior written notice to the other. And I would so move that.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. The next one is another renewal for annual contract for procurement cards. That's on page 5 of your agenda. And essentially, this authorizes us with our working bank, Bank of America, who serves as a pass-through, to spend that money, budgeted money, that's already in the college funds over a period of time. That doesn't mean we'll spend that much. What that means is that authorizes a cap, and we won't spend more than that. Historically, we spend less than that. So, it's a recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the renewal of the annual contract for the college procurement card program with the Bank of America NA. FIA card services at an annual amount not to exceed $2,750,000. I would so move that.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I was leaving it up to you.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. I'd like to group three recommendations together, if I could, to speed the process. Items number 5, 6, and 7 in the board packet. These are recommendations for software maintenance, for cranyard lighting, and for blade servers. The detail, of course, is before you. It's a recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the following recommendations of the college administration. The lowest acceptable bid of $70,263.22 from Exend Group Incorporated for Syntac Software Maintenance, the low bid of $81,537.75 from Heritage Electric LLC, plus an additional $8,154 to allow for contingencies of possible unforeseen costs for a total expenditure not to exceed $89,691.75 for JCCCBNSF Cranyard Lighting. And I just might put aside, these are funds that will be reimbursed to us from Burlington Northern, and the low bid of $213,543.34 from CDW Government LLC for blade servers. And I would so move.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's pass.
Thank you. Renewal of our telecommunication services. Again, this is a contract renewal we have with Southwestern Bell. The amount that we're suggesting here for $100,000 is an amount that we have not for several years. If I remember correctly, spent that amount. Again, it's a cap, not the amount we will spend. So, it's a recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the college administration's recommendation to approve the annual renewal of a contract for telecommunication services with AT&amp;T at an annual expenditure not to exceed $400,000. And I would so move.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. The PEI Loan Program Amendment, as you have talked about for very, for many months now. This is a moving target. We continue to find savings. Therefore, we find more things we can do with this loan program, and we're nearing the end. But this is another piece that we want to spend the money in. It's a recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to authorize execution of amendment to the Post-Secondary Educational Institution Infrastructure Finance Program, effective December 15, 2011. It's shown on several pages, 34 through 43 on Supplement B. Subject to review and opinion of legal counsel. And I would so move that.
Second.
Any discussion? All those.
I just might thank Bob again for his superb work on this and others.
Absolutely.
It, again, has been a moving target. We've been able to stretch these funds much further than we ever anticipated because of the good prices in the construction industry. But every time we switch, Bob's got to do more work to get authorization to do that. So, we thank him for that.
Dr. Cook?
Thank you, Chairman Weiss. The attorney side is coming out on me. I think your motion said by December 15. The document says December 1. So, is it the 15th or the 1st before trustee Musul jumps all over you?
It's the 1st. It doesn't matter.
Recommendation says the 15th, so I'm...
It is the 15th. The document is in the original board packet as the 1st, which is wrong. It should say the 15th, which is what it says in Supplement B.
Okay.
Good point.
Also indicating the ever-changing nature of this field. All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. The recommendation you've been looking for, another sponsorship request, budgeted money that we have in our accounts. It's a recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve $2,500 for the KCPT Producers Society. And I would so move that.
All right. Second. All right. We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. I'd just point your attention toward the capital acquisitions and improvements in the Network Infrastructure Equipment and Services Report. I know we go over this quickly, but Rex and Bob just do an excellent job in managing the acquisitions and improvements for us. And of course, Denise just does a superb job with our very large, sophisticated network system, and we continue to improve every week with that. And we thank both of them so much.
That concludes my report. All right. Thank you, trustee Drummond. We'll move next to the Learn and Quality Report. And trustee Sharp.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We met, gosh, what day was that? Monday, December 5. And Dr. Kovak walked us through the Center for Innovation Program, which is really interesting to learn about. I'm looking forward to seeing some of the results that come out of that. But the Center for Innovation allows faculty to come together and brainstorm, share ideas, and go through a whole process. There's a long involved, not a long involved process, but a four-step process that they'll go through. It's a very rare concept in community colleges. And so, we're sort of being the model for community colleges. And other institutions will be able to tag into our ideas and best practices through the ACC and our partners there. We also talked a little bit about the Board of Regents' performance-based funding. It appears that our priorities for performance-based initiatives are different than the Board of Regents'. And so, we're continuing to work with them to encourage them to recognize the importance of developmental education for our institution and some other local priorities. On the curriculum side, we included or added in a metal fabrication certificate and also clothing alteration certificate programs. And we're not meeting in January because students won't be back and teachers won't be back. So, that's all I have. Anybody have any questions?
All right. Trustee Sharp, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Rail, do you have a Human Resources Report for us?
I do. Thank you, Chair Weiss. The Human Resources Committee met on Tuesday, December 6. And the bulk of our meeting involved a rather robust discussion around policies that relate to use of computers, use of the Internet, use of social media, and those sorts of kind of hot-button issues. We find ourselves certainly in a time where all businesses and where no exception are being faced with a myriad of issues as it relates to the use of social media by employees, staff members, students across the board, and then the use of the college's network and the use of the college's technology for a number of reasons that may not always be legitimate reasons. And so, there's an ongoing discussion about what policies we need to have in place and how those policies are going to manifest themselves and be implemented. Certainly, we're in a rather unique position as an academic institution in that we're faced with some issues surrounding academic freedom as well. And so, we have to make sure that we carefully balance the interests of everyone involved. And I anticipate that those discussions are going to continue before we finally land on where we will end up. One of the things that we did end up deciding was that we need to kind of reach out to some other institutions, the League of Innovation Schools, for example, and find out what they're doing in this area in terms of policies and procedures, and kind of use that as a little bit of a template or guide, if you will, as to where we may want to go. So, that was really the bulk of our discussion. We also received an update on the compensation study. There have been six companies who have responded to our RFP to perform our compensation study. And because of the way that the selection will be made in the process, it'll be at least the January board meeting before we can bring a recommendation forward. And that's being optimistic, I think, would be fair to say. So, that's a work in progress, and we'll keep you updated on that. And there were no recommendations to come out of the meeting. We did move the meeting for January back to January 13 so that we wouldn't be faced with a meeting the very first day back on campus. So, January's meeting will be January 13. And if there are no questions, that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, trustee Rail. We'll move next to the President's Recommendations for Action. And trustee Dr. Drummond, if you've caught your breath from your management committee report, do you have a Treasurers Report for us?
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And we'll try to make this even briefer. Behind tab 5, pages 23 to 24, you'll find our excellent Treasurers Report. The staff continues to do a very good job with this, and we appreciate that. Just point your attention that there's a few highlights here. We received a tax distribution of over $905,000 in October. We also, you would also see on page 27 that our auxiliary fund revenues are very, very strong, up about 22% over expenses. Very good year for us, driven by the bookstore numbers, which we're pleased about. Then on page 34, in the lower right-hand corner, if you want to dig, there's a cash balances of various funds that add up to a very large unencumbered balance. And with all that, I'd be glad to entertain any questions you might have about our Treasurers Report. It's a recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the Treasurers Report for the month of October 2011, subject to audit. And I would so move that.
Second.
All right. Any discussion or any questions of Dr. Drummond? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And Dr. Drummond, does that conclude your Treasurers Report?
That concludes my report. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Then we'll move to Clinical Affiliate Agreement. Dr. Callaway.
Thank you, Dr. Weiss. And under tab 6 of your board packet this evening, you'll see one request for the Board to consider a clinical affiliate agreement. As you know, just about each month, we have some type of clinical affiliate agreement that we ask the Board to consider. This month, we do have one related to our nursing program in support of that, most particularly our iron refresher program. We have a clinical affiliate request for the Arthritis and Rheumatology Clinics of Kansas City LLC, which is located in Leewood, part of our regular nurse refresher program and experience for our students. So, it's a recommendation of the college administration. The Board of Trustees authorized the college to enter into an agreement with Arthritis and Rheumatology Clinics of Kansas City LLC for the clinical experience for our iron refresher program. This would be for the period of January 1, 2012, through June 30, 2012.
Entertain a motion to that effect?
So, move. Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Dr. Callaway, please continue.
Thank you, Dr. Weiss. Just a couple of items I'd like to mention to the Board from the monthly report. I know you've had a chance to read through that. We were pleased to host, college was pleased to host this week, a meeting of the Kansas City Area Development Council, where we received a report from the committee that's working with Kansas City, Missouri, and Kansas City, Kansas, related to the Google high-speed Internet connections that are being proposed for our region. Really outstanding report was received, including how eventually those Internet connections through Google would be moved throughout the region as a whole. And so, had a great chance to not only hear where they were going, but also have, we had some opportunity to provide some input to the committee that's working on that through those two cities. And look forward to eventually that opportunity. We do expect that they'll be following through on their plan, which would be to make some connections into the homes first, and then eventually businesses, which would include, be included in the Kansas City region, and then eventually move down towards our areas. So, pleased to hear that that's moving ahead. We do expect it'll be sometime before we get connections down this way, but it's certainly moving forward, and that's a good thing. And the best news of all that is they're starting to have conversations, you know, down towards our region. So, that's good. Also glad to report to you that Dr. Reinhardt and I had a chance to spend the day in Topeka. That was the thing that we love to do best.
[laughing]
And participated in the Regents' Meeting today. The good news was that after the Regents' Meeting, the Transfer and Articulation Committee met and approved two documents. And I provide those to you at your spot. I apologize that you may have some of my handwritten notes on some of those. But the first is a vision-mission statement that was approved by the committee and will be carried forward by Regent Logan to the Regents' next month for their approval that provides some direction, if you will, for envision-mission opportunities for this project that's so, so important to our students. This, just having a statement talking about articulation and transfer is huge for us. I know Dr. Cook will be reporting later about our KACC T meeting, but I'm sure we'll be able to share with you that much of our KACC T agenda is included in this vision-mission statement. And then, following that conversation and approval by the committee, the committee then approved a group of 51 credits that will be approved by the Regents or carried to the Regents in January of guaranteed transfer for our students. Included in the list, of course, is our English Composition 1 and 2, Public Speaking, College Algebra, U.S. History... 1 and 2, Public Speaking, College Algebra, U.S. History, Introduction to Literature, Micro and Macroeconomics, Introduction to Psychology, Introduction to Sociology, Principles of Biology, Chemistry, Physics, American Government, and we expect that by the time we hit January, the committee will also have approved General Biology, Physical Science, Anatomy and Physiology, and we think many more. It's our expectation that as many as 72 hours will probably be guaranteed transfer for our students by the time we hit the January It has been a lot of beating our head against the wall to get to today, but I think it was all worth it, and it looks like our students are going to find their pathway to transfer much easier once the Regents approve this next month. Let me stop and see if Dr. Reinhardt might have any other comments or anything I missed from the conversation. Let me just say Jim Williams from Poria State has been spectacular in helping lead from the university side, certainly Regent Logan and the members of the committee. Dr. Reinhardt was on the original group that designed and planned us through what got us to today, so it's been a long road, but I think a positive road for our students.
Well, the original group was not as successful as the one that Dr. Callaway is co-chairing with Dr. Williams. In fact, as I was sitting and listening to the conversation today, I almost got whiplash from hearing the conversation literally go 180 degrees from where it had been. It was just unbelievable because, as Dr. Callaway pointed out, there was tremendous resistance and stalling and so on, but Regent Logan certainly did help. And I told Dr. Callaway if he wanted me to write a letter of support for his performance review based on what I experienced today, I'd be very happy to. He's done an outstanding job, and it doesn't seem like it's happened quickly, but I think the turnaround has happened quickly. And Kansas won't, when this is finally completed, Kansas won't be at the bottom any longer. It hopefully will be one of the leaders in these transfer models, statewide transfer models, so pretty exciting.
We have another 55 or so credit hours that are under consideration right now through the committee that probably could be and will be added over the next six months to the list, and that includes everything from philosophy and anthropology to calculus and music and art appreciation, art history, foreign languages, political science, ethics. So we're very excited about where we are. For members of the audience, if you're interested, I know it's tough to read, and I apologize for that. We literally walked on campus and almost into the meeting, but we do have copies of what was distributed, which our Regent Logan will be, former Trustee Logan and now Regent Logan will be carrying towards the Regents'. So it was a good day in Topeka, which is really oftentimes hard to say, and that will conclude my report.
Before I open it up for comments and questions, I have two. The first one being that I know that many things must proceed slowly, deliberately, and with small successes that build upon each other. And having said that, have the non-Regent colleges and universities in the state been brought into the discussion yet, since I'm certain that a significant number of our students do transfer to those institutions?
Actually, I remember one, at least one representative from a private school being on the original committee. I don't know about the current one.
The current committee, there isn't, but the irony of the situation is that our students transfer, I mean, it's 180 degrees from where we are currently with our state-supported universities. The private universities are much more adept at looking at the success our students bring to their classrooms, and so quite frankly, we've not really had the issue with the privates that we've had with the public universities. Quite frankly, equally frankly, our students transfer to out-of-state universities much more effectively than they do to in-state. So, you know, this has been around a whole range of things, and some of it, I think, has to do with our students transferring to out-of-state universities, the ways that other states have kind of handled articulation, and are much more progressive than what we have been here in Kansas. So this was a big day for us. We've always had great relationships with the privates, and actually, the states are, their largest group of transfer students growing is the group that goes to UMKC, because they also have the tuition reciprocity and consider our students for what would be in-state tuition. So we're not really seeing as much challenge there, but there have been on occasion, and we'll, you know, we'll continue to deal with, you know, making sure that those articulation relationships with the privates remain strong as well.
Thank you. And then my final comment before I ask the rest of the trustees, at the risk of offending those whose names I can't possibly mention all of them, I did notice in here that Associate Professor Jim Liker is mentioned in here again as writing an article, and as I recall, in perhaps last month or the month before, he had just finished a book that was recently published. I'm always impressed with the output of this particular individual, and would like to commend him for the recognition and honors that he brings to the college. So kudos to Professor Liker.
Dr. Liker's been a prolific researcher, which, as you all know, is not necessarily something that's compensated for at the community college level, but he's done a spectacular job of that, and also then the subsequent writing related to that research. So he certainly sets the bar high for all of us. Appreciate your recognition of him.
And do we have any other comments or questions?
Please, if I could.
Dr. Drummond.
Obviously, this has been a very long journey, much longer than it should have been. It should have been much simpler, much easier, happened much quicker, but it didn't, but it is. And I would commend Dr. Reinhardt and all the others for their efforts across the years, literally, to get this taking place, and certainly with Dr. Callaway, with his superb leadership, this has occurred. I think that's been a catalyst for this to move forward, and then I know it's been dealt with in our association with community colleges and our representatives there, Trustee Mitchelson and now Trustee Cook, and so there's a whole host of people who have contributed this, and in my sense, it's a real victory for students. In the state of Kansas, you can't imagine how many students had to pay twice and take longer than it should have been as a transfer with our public institutions. And for this to almost be on the cusp of happening is a real victory for a whole generation of students yet to come. So thank you for your work, all of you, and for any I've missed out on. It's just, it's superb, really superb.
Other comments?
I have some comments to make, but I'll defer until I get to the KACCt report.
All right. Thank you. I don't believe that we have any old business or new business for this evening. I'd say none. Then I will move on to reports from Board Liaisons. And Ms. Galanow, is she here this evening?
She is.
And you have a Student Senate report for us. Thank you.
Hi. It's always a pleasure to be back. Only steps away from our winter break, so that's good. Today, I will go over some projects we completed this year with, as the year's closing out. As mentioned before, we hosted Fosse-Visanda, which was a service project for JCC students and faculty to come together and sort of celebrate the holiday spirit, and it was really successful. Along with it, as mentioned before, Student Senate also hosted JCCC Gives, which is a service project in which students, faculty, and staff helped provide gifts for 11 JCCC families. The families who received help were experiencing a hardship this holiday season, and they were very thankful for the help from their peers. The donations varied from anything from a holiday meal to an installation and donation of an entire furnace. For this project, it's important to thank the JCCC community for the nominations and donations that we received, and we're hoping to make this an annual JCCC Student Senate event. We are looking at organizing town hall meetings in February for students to share their thoughts with the Student Senate, and so we can see what problems there are and how to resolve them. Their, its town hall will be focused on a specific topic based on recommendations we have collected through tabling this year. The first one will be focused on the smoking ban that we had here on campus. Students are very concerned, and we want to see how we can resolve any issues that we have with it. And the second one will be discussing pricing on food, on campus, pricing on food on campus, which is a very big issue for students lately. Our Green Committee is in the early stages of working with the learning management system and is looking at increasing the use, I'm sorry, the use of online methods to submit assignments and view grades through Angel. Maybe we'll see how to explore making it more mandatory and how to use it more. And as always, we continue to fund our clubs and organizations for their trips and events. And that concludes what we've done so far. It was a busy semester, but we were happy, and we had two very successful events, so we're very proud of those. At this point, I will take any questions you might have.
Anyone have any questions, comments?
All right.
Thank you. All right. Dr. Cook, are you ready then for your Kansas Association of Community College Trustees' Report?
Thank you, Chairman Weiss. On December 4th and 5th, Dr. Weiss joined Dr. Callaway and I on our trip to Independence, Kansas for the quarterly meeting of the KACCt. And in somewhat of a surprise, at least to me, Dr. Callaway and I were made aware of 126 new species of birds on the way down and back because we didn't know that Dr. Weiss was a certified bird watcher. And so the trip was very quick and intercepted several times by, oh, there's a blue-tailed whippoorwill, or there's something. So that was really interesting. We had a wonderful reception. If you've not been to Independence, Kansas, we had a wonderful event on a Sunday evening at the Booth Hotel. It was built in 1871, totally restored, and the 19 colleges were all in attendance with their president or administrative representative and their trustee. KACCt is, I have a couple points. Number one, they're really pretty solid financially, and again, I would be remiss not to acknowledge Trustee Mitchelson. It's interesting for me to go to these meetings, and reference is always made to Lynn, and particularly those that are concerned about the finances of the format and structure that he helped lay out. So KACCt is in good financial condition and is in good hands. Secondly, there are three working committees for KACCt. There's a marketing committee, public policy committee, and the transfer and articulation committee. The marketing committee is really focused on how can we best portray the image of the community college network in Kansas in part as an economic development generator to each of the local communities. And I believe we totally understand and clearly understand the impact that Johnson County Community College has within this region, but throughout the state, the college in that particular area is really a driving economic catalyst for those communities. So the marketing committee is trying to look at ways, whether it's signage, webpage, email, whatever the case may be, to best market that image and drive the economic impact of the local college. The public policy committee, lobbyist Carter referenced the corporate consul and that meeting that took place this week. Each of the colleges have identified corporate partners to be spokespeople for their college, both in Topeka and locally, to help our local delegation and state delegation to understand the economic impact. And I believe that each of us have a responsibility, whenever we can, to utilize our partnerships with the business world and let that message be told to the elected officials to always remind them every day, every day, the impact that businesses have within our communities and the impact that our colleges have to help those businesses be successful. So the public policy committee is working very diligently in that regard, and I think there's a meeting with the corporate consul in January with the Board of Regents to help extend that message. Transfer and articulation, Dr. Callaway's really touched on that. Just a couple of things. Dr. Callaway's been really significant in the leadership, and again, as I attend these meetings and kind of a rookie, it's easy to read the reliance that not only the trustees have upon Johnson County Community College and its representation, Dr. Callaway, but also the presidents. And I think there's a cadre of college presidents working with Dr. Callaway on that committee that are really committed to. And one of the strengths of what's happened is the 19 colleges themselves have bought into and are aligned with, whether it's a course numbering system, it's a database system, which different colleges use different database systems, so that's another step we're working on to try and align a simple thing like numbering the courses. But I'm really pleased with how the 19 colleges are coming together to work as a team. It's not just the community college is trying to receive good articulation with the four-year schools. We need to improve upon that within ourselves. And then another element we're working on as well is the discussion we have with high school programs, K through 12 programs, to try and deal with this issue of reducing developmental coursework that some of us at colleges think need to be taken from students from high school. So we're looking at both ways, and I'm just really pleased with the openness and the candidacy that, the candidness that the representatives have with each other to get this accomplished. Our next meeting is, and then I would say along that articulation, that when you see Regent Logan, and I think we all know his passion and efforts to accomplish things, get things completed, it was interesting for me, Dr. Callaway, and Dr. Weiss, to hear some of the other trustees just respond, how well do you know Regent Logan? I sat in on a meeting, and he means business, doesn't he? And when he believes in something, he moves it along. So I believe we should all thank Regent Logan for his work pushing this along. I think the plan is for them to hear it again in January, but the ultimate goal is to have this all completed by December of 2012. And Trustee Drummond, I appreciate your remarks. I know having, you having sat on the Olathe School Board, you've had some discussions about that at that level as well, and it really is a real success for our citizens and taxpayers of the state of Kansas that there won't be replication, hopefully, of coursework. Our next meeting is February 16th in Topeka, the day when we'll convene for our meeting, and then also put some emphasis with our state legislators in Topeka. And then I think lobbyist Carter also talked about the initiative for us to go together in Washington in February during the legislative summit. And again, the trustees of the other colleges really appreciate what Johnson County Community College does in terms of helping that process. And Dick Carter, they really appreciate your maneuvering us successfully around Washington, D.C. with all of the arrangements you make, and we truly appreciate that. I believe, Dr. Weiss, I would defer to you because you were there in attendance as well, but that would conclude my report with KACCt.
All right. Thank you. And I was fortunate enough to be able to rearrange my schedule to be able to attend this particular one, and I would encourage all board members, if your schedule permits, to attend at least once per year as an opportunity to get to better know the function of KACCt, as well as to get to know other trustees and our presidents around the system, is very worthwhile to do. And I wasn't going to mention this, but since you brought it up, Trustee Cook, I did want to mention that this coming Saturday, I will be leading the annual Olathe Christmas Bird Count, and if you'd be interested in a morning of citizen science and fellowship, you can meet me at Ernie Miller Nature Park in Olathe at 7:00 a.m.
7:00 a.m. Let me make a note of that.
Make a note of that.
I nominate Trustee Cook.
All right. And with that, we'll move on then, unless anyone has any other comments or questions. To the Johnson County Research Triangle and Trustee Stewart.
The Johnson County Research Triangle Report, or J-Cert, we have not met since the October meeting. The next meeting is February 27th. I believe that's out at the Olathe Innovation Campus at 7:30 a.m. I can report on that exact time and date at the January Board I can report on that exact time and date at the January board meeting, but things are going smoothly. Receipts are coming in a little less than anticipated just because of the, the economy and it's based upon the sales in the county and sales taxes down. So, projections were about $15 million a year and it looks like it's going to be a little below that, 14 and a half million collected. But that goes out to the three entities. But we will have our next meeting on February 27th. That concludes my report.
All right. Any questions or comments for Mr. Stewart? All right. And the Collegial Steering Committee did not meet this month, so there'll be no report. And that moves us to the Faculty Association and Mr. Anderson.
I want to start off by, by thanking Dr. Callaway and Dr. Reinhardt for the work they did with this articulation process. It's, I've been working here as a counselor for the past 23 years and, you know, it's always been just beyond actually annoyance, you know, the idea that a student could come here in two years, leave here with an associate degree and then transfer to a four-year school and still be facing more gen ed requirements was just, you know, to the point where I was grinding my teeth over it. And I thought, I thought there were, I would never see this happen in my lifetime, actually. I thought I'd never see this change happen in my lifetime. I'm just, I'm just, when they told me last week when I met with him, just Friday, he said this is going to happen. I was like blown away by this. I can't even imagine this is happening. And this, this is a huge deal. It's a huge, huge deal and it's going to be a huge benefit for our students and I'm just, just very, very excited about this. It's just great stuff. So, I want to thank you guys for helping push this forward and it's going to mean a tremendous amount to our students because it's going to save them so much, you know, time, expenses and momentum that they can come and just make this, this connection when they get to the four-year school. It's just, it's just amazing. You know, we've been so far behind in this and it's exciting to think that we're caught up now to, to the year 2012, I guess. So, it's pretty amazing. You know, to the casual reader of the board packets that we have coming out on a monthly basis, most people looking at those could, could see them in kind of a way where the content might be perceived as maybe a little on the dry side, but this, this month's packet is different, I think anyway, because when you look at it, it has a section in there that speaks to nine people who received a sabbatical award and also 10 people that received a distinguished service award. And if you have time to go back through the board packet and read through that stuff there, I think you'd be very impressed with the activities these people are involved in, the commitment they have to the college and just the variety of things, the fact they're doing, I think is, is pretty amazing. The, the external judge we had for distinguished service is a friend of mine I used to work with when I was at a college in Montana. And he, we were in a conversation one night on the phone and he was just going on and on about, about the, the quality of the applicants and the quality of the work they were doing. He was very impressed and that came up many times in the conversation. Also, in the board packet, there is a list of folks that have put in a notification for retirement and there's about three of them that, that come to mind that I want to maybe speak just a little bit about. Judy Browsel is, is one who's going to be retiring here coming up in, I think it's May. Judy has been at the college for, for a long, long time. She's one of the principal architects of our graphic design program here on campus and she's worked with a tremendous number of students over the years and has had a real active hand in creating the program to, to the level it is today now. And, and she's going to be terribly missed, I'm sure. Another one that came to mind when I saw that the list was Sally Edwards. And Sally is a math professor here on campus and I've been recommending students to Sally for the last probably 23 years. And I can tell you this, I've never once had a student come back and say they didn't like her or had any complaints about her as, as a teacher. And that's, I think, a very high compliment. And as a matter of fact, I had so much confidence in her as a teacher, I recommended my son to take her for his college algebra class. And so, she'll be missed terribly too. And then last but not least, Carolyn Caddell, the director of our international education program here, she's had, she's had the ability to really impact a lot of people's lives here across campus by them being involved in international programs here and all the students that have been involved in, in study abroad programs. And it's going to be hard to see these guys go because they're going to leave a tremendous void here on campus. But it's, I'm happy for them on the, on the one hand that they're going to get a chance to enjoy the next part of their life, but also to, a little bit sad knowing that they're going to be leaving and leaving a major void here. So, also, I want to wish you all a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. So, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Cook.
Chairman Weiss, thank you. Mr. Anderson, thank you for representing your Faculty Association the way you did tonight. It was refreshing to hear your take on the, on the references you made to the faculty. I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
Mr. Anderson mentioned several of our best and brightest faculty. And if there's ever a reason for a college to have an emeritus program, it, because of some of those names. And I know we're going to be in the midst of going into negotiations and talking through some of those things, but, you know, I think about Carolyn and Sally Shirley and, and Bill too, you know, truly people who are exemplary in their field and their discipline. And I'd also say, Jeff, thanks for mentioning that. They really truly are exemplary people and a reason why our students do so well. So, thank you.
You know, to add to that too, we had, we had 10 people received distinguished service awards, but that doesn't even, you know, factor into the number of people who are doing exemplary work on campus that didn't take the time to, you know, submit for the award because we've got, we've got some very, very fine faculty that are in a lot of various across campus here, so.
The comment I'd like to make too, again, at the risk of offending the other eight faculty, I'd like to single out Lisa Cole and, and her proposal for her sabbatical. I've had the honor of knowing Professor Cole for, for several years as we have pursued our PhDs together. And I'm very much looking forward to, to seeing her report when she finishes her sabbatical. So, thank you. Other comments or questions?
I might just mention I had the opportunity to stop by the Faculty Association holiday reception last Friday night and beverages were flowing and discussion was flowing and it was a good time. I do understand that I will be invited back, but they will assign me to developmental educational faculty.
Thank you, Jeff.
I might just comment, one other requirement that that is mentioned in here is Brett Gustafson.
Yes.
And Brett has been here for, I don't know, 25 years. And for one person that has photographed the significant events on this college campus and off this college campus for all those years, and hopefully we have protected that inventory of photographs because that, that is a really amazing, I don't know how many, we ought to have him come in and make a report, how many photographs he has in his library there of significant events here at the college. But he'll be sorely missed and hopefully we have a good replacement for Brett as a photographer to keep that going.
And it's going to be very difficult to host, to host a roast in his honor because he's not going to be in any of the photographs.
I took his camera once in a while and took a picture of him. So, there's a couple of those.
All right. That brings us to the Second Petitions and Communications section of tonight's board meeting. This section of the board agenda is a time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan on addressing the board. In that instance, the chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes. Presenters may choose to speak at either the first or second one, but not both. And prior to beginning comments, we ask that you state your name, address, city and state. And do we have anyone that would like to address the board at this time? All right, seeing none, we'll move then to consent agenda. The consent agenda is a time for the board to consider as one motion, a number of items generally considered to be of routine in nature, although as several of the board members and other staff members have commented, some of the names that are listed in here for both sabbaticals and retirements are anything but a routine. They represent some of the best and brightest and most dedicated staff and faculty at this college. And so, the fact that this is a considered routine should not reflect on them at all. But at this time, do we have any of these items that the board would like to pull or to consider individually? And seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motions pass. That brings us to a executive session. And I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed in consultation with attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship in order to protect the privilege in the board's communications with its attorney in these legal matters. The session will last approximately 45 minutes and no action will be taken during this session. I would like to invite, invite the following people to, to join the board in this executive session. Dr. Dennis Day, Dr. Judy Corb, Dr. Marilyn Reinhardt, Mark Ferguson, board attorney, Dr. Sobcek, Dr. Grove, Terry Schlicht and Dr. Callaway and, and also attorney Tanya Wilson. And also, I believe that trustee Musel will be excused for the first portion of, of this executive session due to a conflict. And we expect that part of it to last approximately 10 minutes or so. And then we will ask you to, to rejoin us for the rest of, of the session. And if that passes, megaluster.
Mr. Chairman, would you also add item number three as it faces the bottom of the item?
All right, sure. Consultations with the board's bargaining, representation and employer, employee negotiations to protect the public interest in negotiating a fair and equitable contract.
So moved.
All right. Second. All right. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The open session is, is over for now and we'll move into executive session in approximately two minutes.
(Singing) Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Mr. President. Happy birthday to you.
Oh, that's been done before, sorry. And we have returned from executive session. No action has been taken. And seeing that there is no other business to come before the board, I entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned.
Happy holidays.
Yes.
Yes.